In the volunteer's prayer.
This is my head, please. Heavenly Father, we come at this hour with our mind focused on Thee, knowing that You will be with us in whatever we have to do. Father, You said in Your word, You will never leave us nor forsake you. Lord, we're going through some difficult time right now. We have some crucial decision to make. As You just instilled in us to work on the cooperative spirit together so we can get done whatever need be done for the city of Bastrop. Bless us all. Keep us and protect us. These know bless and they thank in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Let us pause for a moment of silence, please, in memory of John West, retired Public Works employee for the city of Bastrop. And this meeting is coming on the heels of 9/11 and also in memory of those who lost their lives. Thank you. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, amen. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, and I wish to welcome you to this meeting of the mayor and board of aldermen. Ms. Goldman, if you would, roll call to determine a quorum.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Nathan?
Here.
Mr. Armstrong?
Here.
Mr. Locke?
Here.
All present, mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Goldman. This is September, and the Cotton Festival is going on. And I know the children are probably really, really excited about that. I have just a few announcements that I would like to make. But before I get into the announcements, I'd just like to say that I am so honored to serve with this board of aldermen and represent the city of Bastrop as your mayor. I believe we have just worked so well together in a spirit of cooperation. I was listening to your prayer, Mr. Johnson. We have had to make some very tough decisions, and we are still working through a process. But I want the citizens to know that you will always be first in every decision that we have to make because you are our purpose for existing. We are a part of a grant with Louisiana Tech. The city of Bastrop submitted a letter of support, and Tech is receiving $900,000 through President Obama's administration. And they factored in some workshops for us. I'll be getting more information, but that announcement came through a few weeks ago. So I'm appreciative of that. The jury's still out in terms of FEMA and assessing the damages. We have to meet a threshold of $100,000. That's in conjunction with the parish. So we are about $10,000 shy of meeting that threshold for those who are waiting for results in terms of what we can do to provide assistance with picking up debris and other situations that occurred as a result of the storm. I would like to also say thank you to all of the departments, police, fire, public works, for working together. We were very proactive. In fact, as we monitored the storm, we got a call from the governor's office. But we were already positioning ourselves for heavy rains and cleaning out the ditches and making sure everything was moving the way it should through drainage lines. And fortunately, we didn't have any bad damage. But I do want to say thank you to all of the departments for being so very proactive. And I see Ronald will hype. Public Works, please express that sentiment to everybody in Public Works Farming. We are currently cranking up the lagoon, Mr. Bell. And I promised you some public relations on that, but it is still being tested. And there are some odors that's associated with the crank-up of it. Mr. Fontenot, you want to talk about that a little bit? But that odor should subside. And, Mr. Bell, I will let you know as soon as the process is completed.
Basically, the level in the lagoons is not full yet. So we're still filling them from the water coming from DG Foods. And once they're completely full, all the air is going to be turned on permanently, and then we'll get better treatment out there, and the odors will diminish greatly. But until that time, we can only go out there and run them for a few hours every day because we can't leave them unmanned in case there's an issue with they can move around and get tangled up and damage the equipment. So we can't leave anything running until the level in the ponds fill up the rest of the way. And I don't know. It might be several more weeks or even a month before they're completely full out there. But for now, we're going out every day and trying to run them for several hours to try to help stir the water best we can and help bring the odors down.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fontenot. And I will keep the public apprised of that, but this is just a natural part of the process that we are unable to control. But this is a million-dollar lagoon system, and we're going to make sure that it works properly. But there are some little bugs that have to be worked out. On Tuesday, I believe it was Tuesday, Ms. Goldman, was it the delegation came together? We're currently looking at what we can do about Martin Luther King South. And I so appreciate the turnout that we had. We had representatives from all of our legislative offices, Senator Thompson, Katrina Jackson, Rodney Alexander, David Vitter. Everybody sent a representative, or I was in touch with someone connected with that office. They are well aware of our efforts to make some improvements over on the west side of town. We do not want to neglect the west side of town and see only part of our city grow. Ask that the public remain patient as it takes time and money. And we know that money is not flowing freely out of Washington, D.C. But we do have the attention of our legislative delegation that we have found a cost-effective way that will aid in eliminating the problems associated with the odor that come from that plant when there's a malfunction. We all understand that that system is over 60 years old. We inherited it. But I take responsibility. We also inherited the responsibility to look for new technology that will improve the quality of life in that area of town. We have an applicant who has applied for a low-income housing tax credit application. That application has been submitted by a company. And it is in the very early stage. So I'll let you know as soon as we have more information on whether they will be granted tax credits. Our gateway project, we're getting ready to let it out for bids. Ms. Goldman, you want to talk about that a little bit? I met with one of the representatives. Our gateway enhancement project, we're looking forward to that. It's going to be an added attraction for the city. Ms. Goldman, you want to talk about that a little bit?
And that's on, that goes along with item number eight. The state is asking us to go ahead and grant the authority to give the mayor authority to sign that contract. And I think that grant is $319,000. So once we get this in, it shouldn't be long. I know winter's coming up, but their goal is probably to go out to bid anywhere from 30 to 60 days. Once we do that, then the projects should start, hopefully by February, depending on the weather. But they'll have 60 days to finish, I think, that contract.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Goldman. Also, I received some information from the Department of Justice on how to aid in stopping bullying. So I passed this information on to the school board and told them that we are willing to partner with them on this challenge. In fact, it is developing a short video. And if the video is selected, the producers of it, meaning the students or the school system, will get a prize. So we are still partnering with the school system to make sure we are working towards improving the quality of life in terms of education as well. Also received something from the Louisiana Municipal Association, that September is National Preparedness Month. And I think we all got our feel of that with what we had to endure just a few weeks ago as we watched the storm make its way around the state and out of our state. That concludes my announcements. Are there any other announcements? One other thing I will mention. I've been talking to you about the EDA grant. And we have heard back from EDA representatives. We submitted a plan to them, so we're having to fine-tune that plan according to their specifics. So we are much, much closer to making that presentation to you as council members. Item number four, public comments as they relate to items on their agenda. Item number five. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from a regular meeting August 9 and special meeting August 28, 2012.
I make that motion, mayor?
Properly moved by Mr. Moore.
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. Are there any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six. Finance Committee report Resolution 12-1462, bills and claims for the month of July 2012. Mr. Locke?
May I move the acceptance of the Finance Committee Report Resolution 12-1462, bills and claims for the month of July 2012?
Mayor, I need to make that correction. That is going to be for August.
August.
Okay. Thank you for that observation. Let the record reflect that we will make that correction. Properly moved by Mr. Locke.
Second.
And second by Mr. Nathan. Are there any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven. Resolution 12-1449. A resolution authorizing the city of Bastrop to adopt the ad valorem millage rate for the tax year 2012. Mr. John Hill, welcome to the meeting of the mayor and board of aldermen.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for having me.
Yes, sir.
This is the day that we've all been dreading since the announcement in the fall of 2009 that International Paper was going to close. You know, the last couple of years, we've been able to absorb some of the loss that has been removed from the mail. But this is the year that they started tearing it down last year. So this is the year that we're, you know, we're facing the biggest loss. I've provided the Finance Committee with some preliminary numbers here as far as what kind of loss you're looking at and what kind of millage increases that you're going to have to increase your millage rate to to acquire the same amount of money that you did last year. Whenever there's a loss in value, a taxing body has the authority to increase their millage rate to receive the same amount of money they did last year. And I'm here to answer any questions that y'all may have about that. I can't say that, you know, to bring in the same amount of money that you do, that you did last year, you're looking at about a little over a 17-mill increase overall. That's for each of the different taxing districts that you have. So that means you're increasing your millage rate from 40.47, which you've done for the last several years, to 57.03. So it's a significant increase. And that's just to maintain what you have right now.
Yes, sir. Are there any questions for Mr. Hill?
When we're just going to effect?
Goes into effect this year. It'll be for this year's tax notice, coming out in sometime in November.
That percentage again is?
Sir?
The increased percentage?
The increased percentage is around 30 percent.
Mr. Hill, you said something about we've been absorbing?
Yes, sir. There's, you know, you've been losing some value from a paper mill ever since they closed it because they've been taking equipment out of it that they could use in other mills. You've been absorbing those losses because they weren't that great, like you're seeing this time.
Right. Because we haven't, when's the last time that we've raised? We haven't in the last three years.
Haven't. Okay. It's been 40?
Well, it's been about four years. I think three years ago, you actually rolled your millage up to bring in to your maximum millage that was generated at the last reassessment in 2008. At that time, we had a little bit of an increase in value in the city. So you maintained your millage rate to bring in the same amount of money. But you had an increase in millage that you could have rolled up to. And I think you did that year before last to increase to your maximum millage at that time.
So if we go to this percentage, what is the total amount of loss based on IP? Well, you said we were dreading this day.
Okay. If you don't roll forward, if you bring?
We just keep the rates like they are.
You levy the same millage rates you had last year, you're looking at approximately $805,000 in loss from last year in property taxes.
And, Ms. Goldman, that would cut a whole lot into our goods services that we have.
Sir, it definitely would. The budget that you're currently operating did not take, we didn't adopt it with this kind of cut at all.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Hill? Mr. Hill, I know you have dreaded having this meeting. And we've had some conversations. And he asked, he said, "Let me just wait." He wanted to be thorough and more accurate, and I appreciate that. The picture that he paints is just a grim reality picture that we have to deal with. And I know that we have worked extremely hard over the years to adjust the budget, the over a million dollars that we've already cut. And then a lot of that was consumed with increasing retirement costs. And I just trust that the public will understand that we are wrestling with situations and trying to keep employees working because employees deliver the services. But every governmental agency is suffering to some extent. And while I look at our fellow cities around us that are going bankrupt, we've been able to hold our own, but we are now at a point where the rubber meets the road. So we will be monitoring our budget closely and looking for opportunities to replace this lost revenue. Thank you so much, Mr. Hill. I won't task you. You was staying for the entire meeting.
No problem. Thank you for having me. And if I'm available for any questions you have in the future.
Thank you. You've been very kind in working with us, and I appreciate that. I know that sometimes it is so easy to become angry and take out that anger on the administration. But we are simply dealing with the hand that has been dealt to us. And I feel that we have done extremely well in making adjustments and keeping services at an optimum. The police and fire departments are the major two costs to the city. And I think there is no one who would not appreciate a police or firefighter after 9/11 because they are our first responders, and they are exposed to so much danger. And every opportunity that I have to say thank you, I want to say thank you to our police and fire departments. I think that's enough of my soapbox. Item number?
We have to?
How do we need to do this, Ms. Goldman?
Resolution, I'm sorry. That's right. We have Resolution 12-1449. A resolution authorizing the city of Bastrop to adopt the ad valorem millage rates for the tax year 2012. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
So move.
Properly moved by Mr. Nathan?
Second.
And second by Mr. Armstrong. Are there any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight. Resolution 12-1463. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a cooperative endeavor agreement and any amendments thereto with the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development, LADOTD, for the Bastrop Gateway Department of Transportation and Development median routes, US 165, US 425, and Louisiana 139, Moulhouse Parish. Supplemental agreement. Number one, state project number H000661, formerly identified as Legacy State Project 016-030026. Do I need to read all these numbers, Ms. Goldman?
Mayor, you don't.
And numbers, as indicated on your agenda that you have, federal aid project number 348504, Bastrop Gateway Median Routes, US 165, US 425, and Louisiana 139. At this time, I will entertain a motion on this resolution.
May I have some move?
Properly moved by Mr. Locke?
Second.
And second by Mr. Moore. Was it you, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Are there any questions? Discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I hit on that a little bit under my announcement because that is something that we have to look forward to coming up very soon. Item number nine. Ordinance 12-4213. An ordinance of the mayor and board of all the persons of the city of Bastrop to amend and restate Section 5-37 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Bastrop, Louisiana, to excuse liability requirements associated with the ownership, keeping, and maintenance of dangerous dogs within the city. This is an ordinance that was introduced. And then we went back and did a little fine tuning after we did some research. Ms. Goldman, you want to speak to that a little bit?
Yes, ma'am. We found in our ordinance that's been on the book for years, it stated that they, that dangerous dogs, or huge dogs, had to provide the city of Bastrop with a proof of insurance and retest them. When we made the decision to enforce that ordinance, we found that individuals that had property insurance, they would not, once they found out they had the dog, they wouldn't even insure them. So Mr. McKee asked the city attorney to draft up an ordinance that stated that they wouldn't have to provide that. They would still have to come and retest them every year or however that's done. But that's what we're asking. We need to change in that because they're not coming and registering because they're not, can't get insurance. So we're kind of defeating our purpose. So we're asking that y'all approve this so we can change our ordinance.
Have any questions for clarity? At this time, I will entertain a motion on ordinance 12-4213.
I'd like to make that motion, ma'am.
Properly moved by Mr. Armstrong?
Second.
Second by Mr. Locke. Are there any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10. Ordinance 12-4214. An ordinance of the mayor and board of all the persons of the city of Bastrop, Louisiana, to authorize plumigation and publication of a fee schedule, its maintenance and modification thereto in a city register in lieu of directly publishing permitting fees for sewer taps and tie-ins within the Code of Ordinances. Ms. Goldman, talk to us about this.
Our current ordinance that we have on addresses the fees that we do for sewer taps and tie-ins. We found that as prices goes up considerably with asphalt and all that, we're finding that every time that that comes and we have to adjust our sewer rates, we would have to do an ordinance and advertise and all that. We talked about it, and to save the city money, we would address sewer taps and also the next item on gas permits and stuff. We would fix it to where we would set the fees, and it would be recorded in the city clerk's office and be on file at all times. And that way, we don't have to come back and change our ordinance according to the fees. At any time anybody would want to know those fees, they could contact the city clerk's office, and we will provide them with a list. We're asking y'all to consider to adopt this to save the city money in coming back and adjusting this because they're fluctuating pretty much now.
Ms. Goldman, this will be a one-time?
Yes. This will be a one-time thing.
Any other questions for clarity? At this time, I will entertain a motion on ordinance 12-4215.
So move.
Properly moved by? Properly moved by Mr. Johnson and second by Mr. Moore. Are there any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 12. Permission to declare certain police guns and surplus property and advertise for bids to sell surplus gun to and authorize? Am I skipping one?
Yes, ma'am. Number 11.
11.
I was about to ask, where did that come from?
I might have confused you when I mentioned the next item, the same thing.
Okay. Ordinance 12-4215. An ordinance of the mayor and board of all the persons of the city of Bastrop to amend and restate Section 6-102 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Bastrop, Louisiana, to authorize plumigation and publication of a fee schedule. Okay. At this time, I will entertain a motion on that.
I'd like to make that motion, ma'am.
Properly moved by Mr. Armstrong?
Second.
And second by Mr. Locke. Are there any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Now that brings us to item number 12. Permission to declare certain police guns as surplus property and advertise for bids to sell surplus gun to an authorized gun dealer. Chief Black.
These are guns that have been seized over the years and years and years. And they've been in our custody in evidence locker. They have, we have checked all of them. They've been checked to see, make sure that they're not stolen outstanding. These guns have been awarded to us by the court, and therefore, we need to move them out, get them out. And we will advertise for bids. We have some gun dealers that are interested in some of these pieces, and they will use some for parts. But, of course, they probably will resell the nicer pieces.
Is that just for the dealership?
You have to have a gun license.
Doug suggests that we do that so we won't have that liability.
Mm-hmm. Do you have someone in mind?
There's been some, several dealers that are expressed in interest. But once we have to advertise and provide them a list of what we have, and they will bid on it. It'll be, everything together. It won't be one at a time. It'll be the whole package.
Okay. Good. Okay. We have to vote on this?
Mr. Johnson, once that bid goes out and we open it, we will have to come back to y'all to give us permission to sell it. y'all to give us permission to sell it to whoever, so you will know who bought it, and you also know how much it's going to be for.
Right. Okay.
Okay. At this time, I will entertain a motion on your granting permission to declare certain police guns as surplus property and to advertise for bids to sell surplus guns to an authorized dealer. I will entertain a motion.
May I make that motion?
Properly moved by Mr. Johnson.
Second.
And second by Mr. Moore. Are there any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number thirteen, discussion, action, bids for hazmat equipment for Bastrop Police Department. Chief Black.
This is equipment that is, uh, was listed in the meth grant to purchase its personal protection equipment, hazmat equipment, for officers to use when dismantling meth labs. Um, and we advertised for bids, and we received one from Ferrera Fire Apparatus, uh, for thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and seven dollars, and I recommend that we accept it.
This is, is there a grant, chief?
Yes, sir.
How, how much was the grant for, if I can ask? Do you remember?
Six hundred and fifty thousand.
There you go.
Any other questions that you need to answer? At this time, I will entertain a motion.
I'd like to make that motion, ma'am.
Properly moved by Mr. Moore.
Second.
And second by Mr. Johnson and Mr. Nation. Are there any question? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Chief Black. Item number fourteen, discussion, action, bids for public works vehicles. Ms. Goldman?
Uh, yes, ma'am. We have, uh, it's in your packet. We opened bids today, and, uh, we got a grant. Uh, I don't remember the total of it. I want to say it's like seventy-eight thousand. It's L-GAP to buy, um, vehicles for public works. It's, it's been, I can't tell you how many years it's been since we bought, but to make the money, um, go further, Mr. McKee, um, wanted to bid out used vehicles. So, uh, we did. It's attached in y'all's packet, but, um, we only had, we had two pickup packets, but only one submitted today. And, um, I'll get that, that to you. The, the actual bidder was a used car dealer. I forgot where it was. Rich Used Car, and they're from West Monroe. They had provided each, uh, six vehicles at, um, for ten thousand, four hundred each. And, uh, we will have some grant money left over, um, so, um, he may buy another vehicle, um, used vehicle for that too. I think we're going to have like eight thousand more from the grant. So, um, Mr. McKee is asking that y'all, uh, recommend this. Uh, he recommends it for, y'all to approve.
At this time, do you have any questions for Ms. Goldman? At this time, I will entertain a motion on item number fourteen, discussion, action, bids for public works vehicles.
May I make that motion?
Properly moved by Mr. Johnson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Armstrong. Are there any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I will request a motion to expand the agenda to discuss resolution one-two-dash-fourteen-sixty-four and permission to advertise for bids for...
Painting of City Hall.
Painting the City Hall com- complex.
I'd like to make that motion, ma'am. Stand the agenda.
Properly moved by Mr. Johnson.
Second.
And second by Mr. Moore. Are there any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution one-two-dash-fourteen-sixty-four, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a cooperative endeavor agreement with the federal administrat- administration and Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development for rehabilitating taxiway lighting, phase two construction, airport project number three dash twenty-two zero-zero-zero, zero-four dash zero-one-four, dash twenty-twelve, for the Morehouse Memorial Airport. Ms. Goldman?
Mayor, this is our second phase. A couple of years ago, y'all approved us doing the first phase, which was the design part. We finished the design part. Uh, this is a hundred percent grant. Uh, FAA will pay ninety-five percent, and State of Louisiana will pay five percent. Um, it's going to be a total, the, this portion here is two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three forty-three is what it's going to be. Um, we ask that y'all, uh, give the mayor permission to sign the contract, so we can begin this project.
Do you have any questions that you need answered? At this time, I will entertain a motion for resolution one-two-dash-fourteen-sixty-four.
So moved.
Properly moved by Mr. Nation, and I heard another voice, Mr. Moore.
Aye, sir.
And second by Mr. Johnson. Are there any question? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item, permission to advertise for bids to paint the City Hall complex. We've had Deman Engineering to take a look at the building, and he has made some recommendations and given us a preliminary cost, and I am asking your, your permission to advertise for bids accordingly.
May I make that motion?
Properly moved by Mr. Johnson.
Second.
And second by Mr. Nation. Are there any question? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Let me also mention to you that we did get some information on Capitol Outlay, and we have submitted some projects for the roofing on this building, which is a flat roof and has posed a problem in terms of leaking. So we have gotten some activity on that that I'm pleased to announce. Of course, you know, everything takes time. Also, on the driveway for Central Fire Station, we submitted some information on Capitol Outlay in respect of that project also. So we will make more information available to you as it becomes available to us. We are looking at making improvements to the City Hall, uh, with, with some one-time grant money that we will be receiving, redoing the chairs and some cosmetic changes and some other necessary changes, and that should be coming very, very soon. We will have to do something with the chairs, because in changing things, we have to look at ADA compliance. This building was built in the early, or mid-seventies, was it seventy-five or seventy-eight, Ms. Goldman?
Uh, seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight, so it was built in the, in the late seventies. So we will probably lose a row of chairs down the center aisle, make it more wheelchair accessible. But we are looking forward to those, making those upgrades to this building. I, yes?
Can we do something about these lights?
Well, we have factored in everything that we can do in terms of the money that will be available to us. Possibly, we have to look down the road towards grant money, because the lights are becoming obsolete. So we will have to phase in new lighting accordingly. But that was one of the things discussed, Mr. Mr. Johnson. I appreciate your question. Are there any other questions in reference to changes and cosmetic changes that we are trying to make? I ask that you see a police officer, firefighter, public works, say thank you. They pull a lot of extra duties, and just in a time where, where times are tough, they have worked a very long time. A lot of our city employees have not had a s- a cost of living raise since two thousand and six. So to just say thank you to them would mean so much in terms of appreciation. I was just thinking about what Mr. Hill said and kind of doing some quick math in my head, and assuming office, it was projected we were going to have to cut the budget by twenty-five percent, which translated into about two-point-five million dollars. We have already cut over a million, and with what Mr. Hill just said, eight hundred and fifty-five thousand, and we have made adjustments all along, so that comes in to pretty much be pretty accurate, wouldn't you say, Ms. Goldman? When you add the two figures together. That is all that I have for tonight, and if there's no further business, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Make that motion, ma'am.
Properly moved by Mr. Moore.
Aye, second.
And second by Mr. Johnson. Any question? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.
Get y'all to wait. I got the press release to give to you.